In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on a public access Facebook page and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. Please go to the town website and identify the Zoom information to be able to log in to participate remotely. We'll begin tonight with a pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, do we have any public comments from the board tonight? Seeing none, any public comments from the public tonight? Seeing none, do we have any announcements to the town manager?
None.
Excellent. All right, we're moving right along here. So, we have two appointments tonight. I'm going to take them out of order. So, we're going to take the joint meeting with the Board of Assessors to appoint Christine Cosgrove first, and then we'll have the scheduled appointment with Uma Flowers. So, if I can have Mr. Latart come join us. So, there's not a, you can come up, there's not a quorum of the, of members on the Board of Assessors, and so, tonight, Mr. Latart will join us in a joint appointment here. And is Christine Cosgrove here with us tonight as well?
Yes, she is.
All right, may I also step forward, Christine? So, we have a request in our drive tonight, a talent bank form from Christine to join the Board of Assessors. First, Christine, thank you, and would you mind just speaking a little bit about your interest in the Board of Assessors?
My husband and I have lived here for over 40 years, right on Lancaster Ave. As a matter of fact, we've run on the wonderful streets of Lunenburg for 40-something years, and I haven't participated at all, and I think I should. Rich suggested that the Board of Assessors is a possibility, and so, it seemed as though it would be a decent fit with my background. Not that I know anything hugely about assessors, but...
Okay. Do any members have any questions tonight for Christine?
Questions?
Just comment, I just want to thank you very much for stepping forward. I am the one who came from the Board of Assessors that's on this board now, and so, I appreciate your stepping forward, and you'll learn as you go, and so, don't worry about that. And I was on it for 11 years, and I learned until the very last day I was on it, I think Rich can attest.
Good.
So, that's the way it is, and as long as you're open-minded, and you learn, and you're fair, and that's what you need.
Good.
Thank you.
Well, hear to those comments, and I'll entertain a motion to appoint.
So, move.
Second.
All right, so the vote tonight will include Mr. Latart, and this is again to appoint Christine Cosgrove until the next election ending, next election of next year, next annual town election?
You should put my name, Higdon...
Christine Cosgrove Higdon.
Okay, Higdon?
In case that's some kind of official part.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
We have it here, Cosgrove, Higdon?
That's okay.
Okay. So, this is to appoint you till the next annual town election, which will occur next year in May. And are you comfortable working for that full term?
Excellent.
Okay. All right, this is a, not a roll call vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any aye for me, any opposed? All right, well, congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please make a point to go see the town clerk and get sworn in as soon as you can. So, you'll go to the town clerk and get sworn in into the position.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. All right, next, tonight, we have an appointment with Uma Flowers to hear a presentation about adult retail cannabis license at 43 Summer Street. So, as you prepare your presentation tonight, we are, we are looking forward to the presentation. We are not making any decisions tonight relevant to that, but we may have a couple different questions over the course of it. Are you counsel that will be presenting on behalf?
I am, and would you like me to take the podium, or can the team sit here?
To the podium, please.
Absolutely.
So, as you come up, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and, of course, your clients, and to the town manager, are you prepared to go through this PowerPoint?
Yes. I'll screen share.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Valerio Romano. I'm the attorney for Uma Flowers LLC, VGR Law Firm out of Boston, joined by Priyanka Patel, Yash Patel, and Davis Patel. Priyanka is one of the two founders of Uma Flowers. Uma Flowers is a women business enterprise certified by the Supplier Diversity Office in Massachusetts. We actually have a lot going on in Mass right now. We have been awarded a special permit, site plan approval, and a provisional license from the Cannabis Control Commission for the operation of a retailer in Pepperell. So, we've been through that process, it's under construction now, and we hope to be open in the third quarter of this year. We also have a special permit and site plan approval for cultivation and product manufacturing in Athol, Massachusetts, and so, and that, we're working, we have applications submitted to the Cannabis Control Commission for that as well. And then, last night, we were in front of Wallfam, and we have special permits submitted there. So, we've got a lot going on in the state. Uma is a, is a local Massachusetts team. With that, let Priyanka just quickly introduce herself and the team, because she's one of the founders and the owners, and just a lawyer.
Hi, thank you, Valerio. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm Priyanka, I'm one of the co-founders of Uma Flowers. A little bit about myself, I'm from Wallfam, Massachusetts, I grew up there. I went to Northeastern University for pharmacy school, so I'm a pharmacist. I've worked in the retail setting for over 10 years. I also come from a family of small business owners and operators throughout the New England area. So, for me to open a medical and adult-use dispensary just seemed very fitting, because I'm able to use both my backgrounds in business as well as pharmacy, use the skills that I've gained as working as a pharmacist in the retail setting. You know, I've dealt with many, many different types of controlled substances, complied with different federal and state laws. I believe I provided good customer service and patient care to my patients and customers, so I felt that I would be able to use all of these skills in operating my own dispensary. Not only myself, but all of the team members have healthcare backgrounds. My co-founder, Tejal, who is not here with us this evening, has her master's in public health. Davis and Yash are both physicians, and they're working in Rhode Island currently. So, for us, it's really important to provide our communities with safe, pure, clean cannabis products, and we really want, as healthcare professionals, we want to focus on the health and wellness benefits that cannabis and cannabis products can provide. So, we're really looking forward to serving the Lunenburg community, and we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
So, I'm not going to read the deck, I don't think there's probably any quicker way to have you guys tune out than if I read the deck to you, so, and so, it's almost more of a leave behind. But you get, I think you have fundamentally, fundamentally, our proposal is to open a medical and adult-use dispensary at 43 Summer Street in Lunenburg.
If I may say, so there are, this is being recorded and broadcast, so if you wouldn't mind, as part of your presentation, kind of quickly walking through the deck so that people at home can follow along.
Of course, I will. And so, you've heard from Priyanka, and sort of the background of Uma, it's, you know, adult-use, but they're, it's a, it's a medical-focused company, right? They're doctors and pharmacists and healthcare professionals, the four of them. So, you know, that's, and they really come from that good place, and the different municipalities that we've been in so far, that's definitely helped. I talked about what our current projects are in Mass, so I'll, I'll skip through that slide as well. Excuse me. Sorry, just trying to move forward. So, further on in the deck after the Uma team, you have some renderings of the Pepperell Mass dispensary. One of the great things about these businesses is, and you know, even just a quick Google search of them nationally, they do a fantastic job with architecture and interior design, to the extent that architecture is applicable, but certainly with interior design, and making the inside of these places wonderful. The exteriors are always immaculate, you know, it's really, they're usually one of the nicest sort of facilities, and certainly the most secure facility in any municipality. My background quickly, I was a co-author of the ballot initiative that ended cannabis prohibition in Massachusetts in 2016. So, I, we raised million, a few million bucks, you know, fought the alcohol and pharmaceutical lobby, and we got it passed by about three points. I got four of the first 11 or 12 medical licenses. This is all I've been doing for years, whether in California to some extent, but certainly in Massachusetts, is citing medical and adult-use cannabis businesses. I've worked with the Cannabis Control Commission, worked with the DPH before that, many, many cities and towns. I negotiated the very first host community agreements in Mass. Actually, you know, like I said, helped author the ballot initiative and worked with the legislature when they were coming up with that host community agreement provision, when they rewrote the ballot initiative, they rewrote the law that we did. So, as we're going along, if you have any questions that pop in your head about the industry or how this works, I may be a good sounding board for it. I got the very first special permit for one of these uses in Dennis in November of 2013, and many, many since then. So, I'm happy to, you know, if the board, if I can help, I've been informal town council sort of a lot of times over the years doing this, so. So, the interior design and the way these places look is fantastic, and it's because, you know, it becomes more and more competitive, and they want to have a good patient and customer experience. So, you really want to have the inside, and particularly with a, with a healthcare-focused group, you want to have the inside really sort of carry that, that feeling. So, then the next slide, you have proposed renderings of their wall pan location. You have the site plan for Athol, so you can see what they're doing there. In Athol cultivation and product manufacturing, built out in stages is the goal, and that's, so we have the first 10,000 square feet permitted, and we have the application into the Cannabis Control Commission, and it will expand in 10,000-foot tranches up to 50,000 square feet. Keep going. So, our proposed location is at 43 Summer Street. It's in the commercial zoning district. There's two buildings on the lot, on the site right now. We plan to tear down the residential one, so that's not going to be a use that's, that affects us. I know there's this 250-foot setback issue, which is actually sort of the bulk of what the deck is about, which I'd like to talk through for, you know, briefly. And then renovate the 3,000-square-foot building that's there. So, there's certainly ample parking for this use. We know that we have to go to the planning board for a special permit and site plan approval, so we don't expect to, you know, we, we know that we're going to have to satisfy parking, traffic, public safety, you know, drainage, all the special permit and site plan approval issues. Really what we'd like from this board, and I understand, we had no expectations that any vote or decision was going to be made tonight, it was really to introduce us, but what we're looking for, as you probably know, is a host community agreement. Armed with the host community agreement and the binding interest on the property, we can go to the Cannabis Control Commission and apply. Typically, the sort of the process, the way it works time-wise, you don't have to, but typically, you get a host community agreement, and then the certification form, the commission doesn't actually review those agreements, they just, there's a one-page cert that you supply to them, and then all the other application stuff, which is sort of easy now, and then the binding agreement on the property, which is the other, you know, unknown variable, and then you go to the commission, probably respond to some requests for information, and a couple months later, hopefully, you'll get in front of the commission for a vote, and they'll award you a provisional license. At that time, we would come back, although you can do it in parallel, we would come back to Lunenburg's planning board and seek special permit and site plan approval, because we'd kind of be locked in with this provisional license at the commission before we go and spend, you know, tens of thousands of dollars on engineering and the whole special permit and site plan approval application. So, that's typically the process, and then, once we get those, we'll pull, you know, demo building permits, complete construction, then the commission comes back out for, to award, there's a post-provisional license inspection, they come back out, say, okay, this looks, looks good, then you'll get a final license vote, then they come back out for a post-final license inspection, you'll get a retail-ready or a commence operations, and that's sort of the process. As far as how long it would take, if we were able to, if we had a host community agreement tonight, which again, totally not expecting that even to be considered, but if, let's say we had one and we applied in a week to the commission, you know, we could potentially be open within a year, depending on exactly how much construction had to happen there. So, that's sort of the timeline and how quickly we move through the commission. The commission only meets once a month, so if you submit your application, you know, the day after they meet, you know, you might get lucky and get in the next one, or the, but if you submit your application the day before they meet, it might take a few cycles, you know, so it's like, it's only once a month, that sets you back sometimes.
For clarification on sighting, is this the former Donnelly's Tavern?
Yes. And actually, Mr. Donnelly's in the audience. And so, that, so, now, zoning, so this is like a lot of why I wanted to come. So, we've been working with your zoning enforcement officer, Lecasey, and I know that, I don't know if you're familiar with what happened at the zoning board of appeal on June 9th as well, it's not exactly the same issue, but it's similar. So, we, we satisfy all the, all the regular setbacks, right, places, you know, the schools and, and, you know, all that, the regular setback stuff. 500 feet of public-private schools, 250 feet of family childcare providers, et cetera, we got all that down. The zoning issue that exists right now is the provision of your bylaw 250-4.15J setbacks for residential uses. This is the issue where we sort of unfortunately have, I don't know if it's a difference of opinion, or it's a, a level of proof that's required, but we're not on the same page with, with Casey, and he's, you know, he's been very responsive, and him and Adam are, you know, they're fantastic, their office is, you know, thoughtful and deliberative, and, but which, I just don't agree with, with their, with their analysis here. It's quite, it's, so, setbacks from residential uses, you have to be 250 feet, as you're probably aware, from a residential zoning district or a residential use, right? Those are the two, it's like, it's pretty simple analysis. I listened to the zoning board of appeal meeting from June 9th today, and I think it got a little convoluted, but the way I'm looking at it, after having done this in lots of towns, and, you know, it's, it's fairly simple, right? The 48 Youngs Road property is also in a commercial district, so that knocks out the 250 feet from a residential zoning district, that's a non-issue. So, the remaining issue is, are we 250 feet from a residential use, right? No one lives there. No one's lived there in years. So, it's not a residential use. So, we don't need zoning relief from the zoning board, we are appropriately zoned today. And so, the concern is, well, how do you know it's not a residential use? Well, I've included in the package a sworn statement from Mr. Donnelly, where he's been told by the owner, Mr. Moran, on at least two occasions, that no one lives there. And actually, if you go to the property, you can see, and in the back of your packet, there's a picture of what you can see at the window of the property, and it's a, it's a business card, and it says Ray Moran Incorporated, Inc., excavating landscaping in Cordwood. For all inquiries, call this number. And then, there's a business card with like a drop box. That's what's going on at the property, no one's living there.
So, I just have a brief question for you. I understand what you're saying, and I understand that in your packet, you indicate that you're going to secure the property.
Yes.
Purchase the property. And I, I guess the question is, in my view, I agree with what you're saying, but unless you secure the property and Mr. Moran happen to sell it, if, if he's the, the current, current owner, then it could revert to a residential use.
So, through the chair, if I, okay. Well, no, so, we're not buying Mr. Moran's property, we're buying 43 Summer Street, which was Mr. Donnelly's property.
Oh.
Mr. Moran's property is at 48 Youngs Road, but it's with, it's 220 or so feet away, right? If it was 245, I'd get an engineer out here to go find five feet, I'm, I'm sort of a joke, but it's not, I mean, it's, it's not 250 feet away, okay? And so, but to answer your question, no. If they wanted to go back and put another, it's been abandoned for over two years. If they wanted to put somebody living there, it's not in a residential zoning district, they would have to go to the zoning board for a special permit or some sort of variance to live in a commercial district. They can't just go back and live there. And this is the issue that didn't come up on the June 9th meeting. It's, so, it's like, I mean, you know, 200 years ago, somebody probably lived in an old building in this town, that doesn't make it a residential use still. It's not like, if somebody leaves it for a couple years, it's been abandoned. And so, I know that Mr. Burlingame and Adam, I think they went to your council, which I think is me, Tallerman, and Costa, if I, and I know Jay Tallerman well, I've written Amicus for some stuff that he has before, in front of the SJC. I haven't talked to him about this issue or your town at all, but I think they went to them to discuss the issue of abandonment. But no, they couldn't just move somebody back in there, they would have to go get the special permit, not us. No one's lived there for years, you know, and I have, I mean, I have, you know, Mr. Donnelly, this transaction will not completely close unless we can move this process forward. So, Mr. Donnelly's not like saying something just in his own self-interest or something, you know, because it, it would just be wasting his own time, right? No one thinks that we're just going to pull the wool over the eyes of the town and, and the applicant who's like super sophisticated and done this in a few towns now, you know, and sort of just make it happen because somebody, so, no one lives there. Our problem is how do I prove a negative, right?
So, if I may, if I may...
Yes, of course.
...jump in here for a second. So, I see that Mr. Moran's here tonight, so I'm assuming he's going to second what you're saying about...
I hope so.
...not residential use, is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, I got some words for that.
Okay.
Great, I'm happy you're here, because we can resolve all this.
So, there, there will be another opportunity for you to litigate aren't the town's interpretation of residential use. So, as a general guideline, this board tends to defer to the building commissioner, so, the zoning inspector, so, and as a former member of the planning board, I kind of see the other side of this discussion as well, which is, you know, you can move into a home that's not currently used for residential purposes, but, you know, you, you can't move into a business, you know, and start living there. So, it's, so I, I do understand, you know, where the commissioner could be coming from, but you will have another opportunity at another point to litigate that with them, I'm sure, or to just debate that. So, aside from the issue with the potential problem at that residence, and if I may pause, is there anything that wants to be offered up from anyone, from Mr. Moran about that subject?
Sure, while we're on the topic, I'll, I'll move away, yeah, absolutely.
Please, thank you.
Hi, I'm Valerio, nice to meet you.
Hi, Ray Moran, owner of 48 Youngs Road, which is, has been a mixed-use residential commercial lot ever since 1948, when my grandparents bought it. It was my grandparents' primary residence. Since 1988, they've had a lease agreement with the company that the company leases two rooms of the dwelling for the office use. In 2012, my grandmother passed away. The estate was settled December 27th of 2019, at which point, we gave my aunt, who has my father's past, so that left me and my aunt as the co-owners. We gave her until August of 2020 to remove her, the rest of the, my grandmother's belongings from the property. Obviously, with COVID, we didn't press those issues, she lives in Ashburnham, both her and her husband are not healthy. The conversations, the two conversations that Mr. Donnelly is referring to were both, mind you, I have met him in passing, I've never been into Donnelly's Tavern, I don't know him personally. The second one, the first one happened, he showed up to 48 Youngs Road while I was working and asked what was going on with the property. The second one was on a Saturday at my private residence, where he randomly showed up and asked what was going on with the property. Again, I didn't know what he was going with, but this is what it is. I have pictures with me, if you guys would like to see them, of the interior of the house. It's fully furnished with kitchen, bathrooms. Again, there was 200 square feet written up in the lease agreement that was for the office, the rest of it is a residential dwelling. The property has been paid taxes, it's maintained, it's mowed, bushes are trimmed, there's a fenced-in backyard where the pool used to be. It's a residence. The intended use with it is to rent it out once the, the rest of the, my grandmother's belongings are removed from it. Obviously, with her belongings there, I can't rent that out. We have been discussing with my aunt, we've been going through, my mother's been doing Zoom and emails and stuff, showing pictures of the things to figure out what she wants, what I'm going to take. But it is a full residence. I mean, it's mixed-use commercial, we've been paying taxes on it that way since 1948, when they bought the residence.
All right, I appreciate, I appreciate that comment tonight, Mr. Moran. All right, you may come up and continue, but I think you're going to have a hard time arguing residential use when the person who owns the property says it's being used for residential purposes.
And so, I don't know if this is necessarily the forum to go back and forth on that, right?
It is not.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not. We're, we're just looking to move on to the rest of the presentation.
Yeah, of course, that's what I figured too. But what I did hear was that no one's lived there since 2012. Furniture may live there, but I...
I, I didn't hear that, but if we can keep going, thanks.
Okay, absolutely. So, yeah, like I said, I don't think this is the forum, and I defer to the chair.
You're correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, so I, you know, the rest of the presentation has to do with the operation of one of these businesses largely, and sort of the benefits to the community. These are incredibly secure locations, right? They're more secure, you know, you could start, they're more secure than probably anything else in this town. Each one of these cannabis facilities, you know, somebody has to show ID before they can come in the front door, then they check in to a security desk, then, depending on medical or adult use, for, for medical patients, you can be 18, for adult use, you have to be 21. There's two, it's sectioned off with, with different point of sale for medical versus the adult-use section. The medical section inside also has a patient consultation room where they can meet with, with, a patient can meet with somebody, you can talk to them about dosing and form methods of ingestion, titration and whatnot, and so, and then you have to show ID for a third time when you make, when they make the sale. It's, you know, you have liquor stores that have repeat violations of selling to minors, and will get a slap on the wrist and lose their liquor license for three days. If these guys sell to somebody underage, they'll have their permit, they'll have their license yanked, and, you know, the, the few million dollars they've spent getting that far. So, this is really one of the most secure things, and it's funny, you know, if you go to a high school and you ask kids, you know, I've, I'm raising three boys in Mass, and you ask kids like, what's easier to get cannabis or alcohol in high school, most kids will tell you cannabis is easier to get, right? It's because it's not well-regulated, right? And so, finally, we're getting there in Massachusetts to the point of regulation. Part of the problem is taxation, it's just, you know, 23% really off the top, and then, if you're also taxing cultivation and product manufacturing in those towns, it even gets higher, and it's tough to beat out the unregulated or illegal market. But that, you know, that's sort of philosophy, but so, there's tons of security there, there's cameras everywhere, your law enforcement will have access to our camera feed, you know, hopefully, they never have to respond there, but if they do, they'll be able to look in their iPhone or whatever, their Android, and see exactly what's going on there. And so, it's one of, these things are like, you could open an OxyContin factory or a bank with less security, you know, Walgreens and CVS sell, you know, pills that are far more harmful without a security guard there. Whenever we're open, it won't be a security guard, I don't believe in mixing guns with cannabis businesses, but there will be a security agent, somebody watching the cameras and trained in security, and everybody there will be trained in security, duress alarms, panic alarms, all that. There hasn't really been any security issues at any of these facilities in Massachusetts. Early on, there was some sort of protests in Boston, and one of them there was, was robbed during the protests, and why, it was really sort of funky and fishy why it happened, but for the most part, there haven't been any security issues at all. In fact, you know, Brookline sort of famously, unrelated crime, string of robberies was solved because of their forward-facing cameras, or their outward-facing cameras. So, that's sort of the 101 on security.
If I may pause, if I may pause there. So, Mr. Marino is a, is our previous police chief, he's our retired police chief, so I want to pause to see if he has any questions about security as it pertains to your proposal tonight.
Actually, I don't, I think, I think part of the regulations require certain security measures, am I correct?
Oh, absolutely.
Any dispensary I've been in is exactly what you just described.
And, and we will vet our, you know, as, as part of the special permit, we were not, we won't submit them to the planning board, but we'll submit them to your police department, and, you know, should they want to chime in. Usually with special permit, this is like an interdepartmental tech review kind of thing, right? So, police will get a copy of everything, we'll submit those under seal, but yes, it's, these are incredibly secure, and we'll, and we'll get the sign-off from your police department as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that largely covers security, preventing diversion to minors, we, I sort of, I, I touched on that as well, the multiple forms of ID, you know, and, and really not selling packages that are, you know, really appealable, appealing to minors. So, we may, you know, it's, it's an incredibly important part of this. Like I said, these, you know, they're going to hopefully buy this property, spend a lot of money renovating it, you know, pay for all the process of getting licensed and local licensing, they don't want to risk that by, you know, having this get diverted to minors, although, you know, I always think there's a lot, there's a lot said about cannabis in Massachusetts, people are very protective and worried about it. I mean, it's pretty much ubiquitous, right? It's kind of, it's kind of everywhere, with or without. or without these dispensaries, you know. Well, as a co-author of the ballot initiative, one of our goals was actually to eliminate the unregulated market, right? That was part of the point here, was to make it so it is regulated like alcohol and less available and not just sort of everywhere and have safe quality control, no heavy metals, no pesticides, no mold, like real safe quality cannabis for people that are adults or medical patients. That was the goal of it. Unfortunately, like I said, the taxes have made that not necessarily happen like, like we'd like it, but that's a common theme across the country. I mean, it just happens everywhere. So the next slide is about preventing nuisance to the community. So typically, the way you think about a nuisance with a cannabis business is smell and odor. Uma is starting their own cultivation and product manufacturing and athol stuff will be prepackaged there. There might be some occasional requirement to separate it and, you know, separate an ounce into eighths or something, but there's no packaging here. You know, the smell won't be an issue for the community. But on top of that, the way they build out the HVAC, there's filtration and whatnot for any lingering smell that would exist in this retail setting. But typically, the real nuisance is smell. And that's really at the cultivation and product manufacturing facility, less so at the retail, but they will still filter it. So that, you know, and then also, you know, nothing here changes Massachusetts law about operating vehicles while intoxicated or, you know, from cannabis or consuming in public or anything else. So all those rules still stand, you know, and all those laws. And so if we have somebody who is breaking the law, and all the ones I've opened, and I spend time with some of my clients, I'm close with them, I've never seen anybody do anything like this, not once. But if somebody was like smoking a joint outside or something, we would have our security agent go find out who they were and they'd be shut down. And we, if, should local law enforcement want to deal with them, we would absolutely have, we would, but they would be blocked, you know, banned from our facility. We don't want anybody doing that. And then, you know, the other thing is like, if there's, on the nuisance issue, if there are things that, whether it's the planning board or the police department or, or this board thinks are important for the community to know, we'll have it in our education materials. So there's materials available to anybody who comes in at the site. We will have, you know, no driving under the influence, no operating heavy machinery, lock up your cannabis, right? It's incumbent on adults to keep substances from kids, right? And so we will make sure that all that's, all that's there and people are, understand that, you know. So marijuana studies and research, this is the last slide. So I mean, there is, so there's a lot of sort of perception that one of these creates harm in a community, but there's simply no data to support that anywhere in the country. There is no data to support that property values go down. That's one of like the big arguments that you'll hear from people. It's actually quite the opposite. Comp's are typically higher for these properties. There's like the sort of broken windows theory about, you know, community planning. These places are immaculate, you know, particularly in industrial areas, those properties are higher valued. As far as adolescent cannabis and drug use, Colorado, which is the most fully developed adult use and medical market in the country, actually has a lower adolescent cannabis rate use than most other states, like, you know, operating motor vehicles. There just isn't data to suggest that security, crime, or, or teenager adolescent drug use goes up. It's just not there. So, and then also, the benefits, opioid mortality rates in, well, you know, in, in medical marijuana jurisdictions particularly, the American Medical Association has a study, 25% fewer opioid mortalities. You know, the idea is instead of medicating with, you know, oxys and Percocets and Vikes and then having your insurance run up and now all of a sudden you're on the street because you're an opiate addict, if you start with cannabis instead, you never go down that road. So that's sort of the thought behind that. There's another study, 1,800 fewer pain pills prescribed, or pain pills and Xanax and Valium and those sorts, per doctor, per year on average in marijuana jurisdictions. So there's a lot of data, and this isn't Americans for Safe Access or NORMAL. These are independent, peer-reviewed studies from, you know, universities and whatnot. So there's a lot of data and I summarized some of them.
I want to thank you for the presentation tonight and open it up to the board for questions.
Is this thing on or do I have to press it?
It's on.
It's on, okay. One, one thing that stood out to me, I read the whole deck before coming here tonight. I am curious about this, and I've wondered it because I've seen it before. What, why is the ID scanned? Like, I could see checking ID, but why, why is it required that a person, that a customer have the ID scanned? And what happens with that information? Is it retained?
No. So it's different for medical and adult use, but the main reason that the ID is scanned is because patients can only buy a certain amount. You're only allowed to buy an ounce per day, right? And so you're not, you should not be going back and forth to the facility. So if I just showed you my ID, I come back an hour later, you may not recognize me. Somebody else might be at the desk. So this way, it's in there, you come back, it will show how much you've bought. So if you bought your ounce, you can't go back in and buy more. And so they scan the ID. So that's for adult use, and every 24 hours, that database is expunged. And then for medical, we do, but a customer can choose to have their information saved and they give you their, their phone number so you could text them if you have a bundle, like, you know, of something that's, you know, on sale. They don't really, you know, discounts is some nuance to that with the commission. Somebody can choose to have their information available to you, but generally, that's expunged every 24 hours. And then for medical, that's, that's somewhat different. We, medical patients are kept in the database, so what they bought, how often they bought it, and then they know what they've consumed. And then if they go in for consultation, that information will be available to whoever's talking to them.
All right. Thank you. That, that makes sense.
Any additional questions?
No, just a comment. Well, first of all, next time you come back here, make sure you spell Lunenburg right. It's B-U-R-G.
Where does it spelled wrong?
In your presentation. That's, I'm just being.
On the front, on the front page, it's got B-U-R-G. If it was, if it was incorrect inside, I'd, I'd missed it because I've been spelling it right. I have dozens of emails. I apologize for that.
I, just a comment. I, I really have a tough time wrapping my head around all this. I mean, you know, the studies that you alluded to, you know, we could argue that all day long. You know that. You know, the old story, right? Figures don't lie. Lies figure. After 41 years in law enforcement, I'm going to tell you right now, I will have a hard time hitching my horses to your wagons. Just the way it is. I, I have a hard time with this, swallowing this whole idea of marijuana. Is that medical marijuana? I understand is, that's a whole different thing. But adult use marijuana, I, I don't believe for one minute that it's reducing any consumption of opioids and so on and so forth. I don't believe that for one minute. So, I mean, I wish you the best of luck. I think the, the medical side of it is, is somewhat useful, but, and I'm not telling, I'm, I try to be as objective as possible about everything, but this is going to be a slow run for me, I think, quite honestly.
And Chief, I don't, I would not expect to change your mind either. You know, you've, you've been at it, you've been doing law enforcement for almost as long as I've been alive. So I, I mean, I would defer to you and trust you implicitly. There are, there are a couple of other things. You know, there's six points off the top that goes back to the town on these sales, and that money can be used for substance abuse programs, you know, for education in schools, for hiring, you know, grief, like, or different kind of school counselors, anything that sort of has a nexus to the use and the perceived harms. So some, some law enforcement, a lot, I mean, most law enforcement people sort of agree with you. I got it, you know, it's not, but, but they also see, well, it is state law, it's legal, let's, instead of having that six points, go to the town next door, let's bring it into our town, and then we can use that to, you know, to benefit the town, since people are going to buy cannabis anyway. So that's all I would say, but I would not, I mean, to the extent, if you ever want to sit down and talk about it, I'd be happy to, but I wouldn't expect to change your mind with any of the studies.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I'm that kind of person. I would sit down with you sometime and we could talk about it. I mean, I've done a ton of research. I mean, I've read about it ad nauseam and, and, you know, like I said, I'm just, I'm never going to be convinced. I, I don't believe that it's, you know, although it's so expensive for one thing, I don't believe that it's had any impact on, on any illicit sale or, or manufacturing or whatever, distribution of controlled substances, or not controlled substances, but illegal substances. So I, I'm going to have a hard time wrapping my head around it, but.
And that's what I was saying. Chief, the tax rate is like making it so we're not killing, we're not beating the black market here because it's so expensive, right? People are going to still buy cannabis from their cousin that they've been buying to from the last 30 years because it costs half as much, you know, and it's, it's one of the problems. But at least the money is going back into these communities, you know. You can see, I'm doing renewals for some of my clients. I see, you know, over the last couple of years, $800,000, like back into a small town. You know, it's like, I mean, I mean, those are some of the more successful ones, but that's a significant chunk of change in a few years, you know, like, most towns don't use it as part of their recurring budget. They'll buy, you know, squad cars or pay, you know, one-time things with, you know, with it because you can't necessarily rely on it in perpetuity. But, but it's, there is significant revenue that can be done, that good can be done in the town where cannabis is there anyway. So you snag that revenue. That's one way to look at it. But I, of course, like I said, would not expect to change your mind, Chief, at all.
It's all about the money, right?
Are there any other questions? So my, my thoughts tonight are, first, I want to thank you for coming out tonight and providing this presentation. I know it takes a lot of energy and time to put together these kinds of projects, to do the research, to figure out appropriate locations, and to assemble the right team to make sure that you guys are working together to, to get this stuff done. So, you know, our town did vote to not prohibit marijuana. We voted in favor of it by a small margin, but we have not prohibited, you know, the sale, the retail sale of marijuana. But we do have some pretty rigid bylaws. And, you know, we had a lot of discussions when those bylaws were created as far as what the intense intentions of those bylaws are. You know, I would encourage you as you move forward that, you know, as these rules and laws are relatively new, that I think everyone in this room from this town participated in that discussion. I know I was on the planning board and I helped write the rules. So I think you're going to have a, as you move forward, I would encourage you to trust the feedback that you're given from our town because we need to negotiate some form of a community host agreement. And that will be really difficult if we have a statement from the building commissioner and you at odds, while a property owner says this is a residential use, for you to argue otherwise is, I think, going to be turning in circles. That's not going to move you very far. So I encourage you guys to move forward and do the necessary research that you need to do. If you have a draft community host agreement that you'd like for us to consider, please for that to the town manager or to Elaine. And again, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much to the chair and to the board. I appreciate it. Truly. Thank you. And, you know, I will do that. I'll send you a draft.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next tonight, we have interviews, appointments, reappointments, and resignations to the town manager.
There are none.
All right. And the town manager report.
First off, announcement of the existing vacancies. There is, there are two vacancies in the Architectural Preservation District Commission. One vacancy now on the Board of Assessors, which is a joint appointment between the Board of Assessors and the Select Board until the next annual town election. One vacancy in the Bylaw Review Committee. Two vacancies in the Commissioner of Trust Funds, which is also a joint appointment between the Commissioner of Trust Funds and the Select Board until the next annual town election. One person recommended by the Open Space Committee, one Citizen at Large and one ex-officio member that is a business owner for the Economic Development Committee. One vacancy on the Senior Work Off Program Committee, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And anyone interested in serving on any of these committees can find the application forms on the town website and complete them and return them to the Select Board's office. An update on invitation for bids. We received general bids for the Public Safety Carport project today, and we received two bids. The low bidder was Elite Construction and Design out of Fitchburg for a total cost to the project of $298,750. This includes the low bid price for the roofing and flashing. The total cost for this project is approximately $164,000 more than the appropriated amount that was in the capital article. So this time, we are recommending not to move forward with the project as this would impact both the fiscal '21 and fiscal '22 budget severely. Update on the Flat Hill Culvert project. The DPW director and I received a comparison of the original construction cost estimate compared to the revised construction cost estimate for this project. So a big factor in that increase was the unpredictable material and contractor cost that the engineer, engineering firm has seen lately. And due to COVID and the Texas infrastructure collapse this winter, there have been shortages in various materials and unusually high prices. This may trend downwards depending on the timing of the, when this project goes out to bid, but the revised cost estimate is based on today's pricing. So that portion adds approximately $67,000 to the estimated cost. The other large factor is in the final design, is that it includes longer and taller wing walls to avoid increased fill in the lake and to address the bit of discovered scour at the existing culvert. This in turn required more excavation of the wing walls and created a closer proximity to abutters, which resulted in some temporary support of excavation. The temporary support of excavation at two of the abutters is required so as not to undermine the shed at the southeast corner and the structure at the southwest corner. This added approximately $209,000 to the estimated cost. Due to the overall increased total cost of the project, that impacts the 10% contingency amount, and that increased by approximately $26,000. So as previously stated, the DPW director and I will work with the engineering firm on submitting a small bridge grant application as soon as Mass DOT announces that they are open to receiving applications. In other meetings, events, and announcements, the farmer's market on the Ritter Lawn will be starting Sundays, June 13th until October 10th, 10:00 a.m. till 12:30 p.m., except Sunday, July 4th. The summer band concerts will resume Monday evenings at 7:00 p.m. July 12th until August 9th with a rain date of an additional Monday on August 16th. And this will be outside of the front of the TCP building. That's all I have for tonight.
Are there any questions for the town manager?
None.
I have a question on the public safety. So as I, as I remember this project, it was to create kind of parking space like covers, right?
Correct. Extend the carport and cupboard area.
Are, and $300,000 is the lowest that it came in?
Yes. That was the low bid.
That is shocking. Okay.
From feedback from contractors, contractors are not willing to submit bids at this time due to the high inflation cost, rising prices. So they're locked into a low bid price if they submit it, and that's not favorable for their business.
Yeah. Well, the price of wood has gone astronomical lately as an example. Luckily, it's down about 20% over the last couple of weeks, but I hear what you're saying. Okay. That's really unfortunate. Thank you.
It was not good news on our part.
All right. For current business, we have two items. We have an amended agenda tonight. We have two items on our current business. The first is to vote on an extension of the contract terms for the town manager and the director of municipal finance until July 31st, 2021. This is intended to give this board more time to negotiate the terms of those two contracts with Karen Broschu and with Heather Lemieux, the town manager. So we're looking tonight for a vote for, excuse me, for a vote for the board to extend these contracts.
Move to extend them both.
Is there a second?
Second.
And to confirm that was to move to extend until July 31st of 2021.
That's correct.
Okay. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? No opposed? Okay. So that both contract terms are extended. We will have some papers that will slide down and sign. We have approval for the June 8th, 2021 minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes for June 8th, 2021, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
All abstain. I was absent at that meeting.
All right. One abstention. Thank you. Thank you. Warrants and, uh, any warrants tonight?
No.
Uh, any action items from the board? All right, committee reports. Any committee reports tonight? Seeing none? All right, old business. So to the town manager, this is the pay-as-you-thrown-bag fee and proposed increase for fiscal year '22. And to confirm, you are looking for a vote tonight, as I would assume?
Um, I don't know if you want to wait for the chairman to come back to take an official vote?
I think it may be, I know the dates in, in what you provided said July the 1st, effective date.
Well, the, um, yes, so that would have to be extended for the rate increase at this point anyways, because it's within, so, yeah. So tonight, I just wanted to provide, um, expanded update
Okay.
on, um, the, the pay-as-you-thrown program, what the impact, um, would be to the cost of the bags, given the two items that we discussed last week, the estimated number of bags that we base the program revenue on, and, um, as well as the discounted bags offered to senior citizens. So both of those play into the cost of bags. So first, um, the estimated number of cases after reviewing the last three years of bag sales, um, and seeing that fiscal '21 was, um, uh, seemed to see a marked increase. Um, the estimate for the fiscal '22 bag revenue will be based on FY '20 numbers. I think this is a, um, more conservative approach to make sure we are, it doesn't impact negatively our solid waste enterprise fund. Secondly, is the senior citizen discount program. I discussed, uh, last week about offering free bags for seniors. I was waiting on data for the number of households um, that would benefit from this program. And I see it as kind of a pilot program to see how it works out in fiscal '22, if, if that were the direction we took. And there approximately, I would use, uh, 2,200 households that would receive one roll of bags, uh, for the year. Uh, so a total of 10, 10 bags, uh, per household that would be eligible for it. That, um, would, the cost of that, uh, to initiate would be approximately $40,000 for collection and disposal and $5,000 for the cost of the bags. The $5,000 would be paid, um, through the recycling dividends program funds, the grant funds, and the $40,000 would be paid through the surplus revenue that we, um, expect to close out at the end of this fiscal year in the enterprise account. Given those two factors and based on, uh, the estimated cost to operate for the, the whole program itself went up about 32% with our new contractor on July 1st, uh, that would impact the bag cost by 30%. So that equates to a 42 cent increase per small bag or $4.20 per roll more. 86 cents increase for the large bags or $4.28 more per roll and a $1.31 increase per extra large bag or $6.54 more per roll. I provided the board in my memorandum breakdown of the estimated revenues and, uh, cost of disposal as well as the proposed cost for the increase for the, the bags, what the current prices are and the proposed increase, the 30% increase.
Okay. Uh, so just to state what you have in the drive tonight, that would be, um, a small bag, 10-roll, small bag would, uh, increase from $14 to $18.20. A large bag, five rolls would increase from $14.25 to $18.53. And an extra large, five roll, uh, would increase from $21.80 to $28.34. So I, I kind of did some rough analysis on this. In my household, there are two of us. Uh, we generate about a bag and a half-ish, uh, per week of 13 gallon trash. So we use the large Lunenburg trash bags and we take our trash out every other week. We use one bag. Um, and so I think our total cost comes to like four or five dollars a month is what it costs to get rid of trash. Um, I would imagine that in the average family, uh, assuming that they're going through one full large trash bag a week, uh, that their, their average cost as well, um, would be about $16 a month with this increase. Uh, so that's, that's, I, I know, you know, I, as someone who manages property, I know that, you know, hiring Fiori, for example, I believe they cost $60 a month for a trash, uh, removal and recycling removal. So I still, I know that that's kind of hard to stomach, uh, 32% increase, but I do think that there's still a tremendous value, uh, that's being offered to the community. And I do have some other comments, but I want to provide the board the opportunity first.
Just want to clarify, well, for my own sake, but also for the sake of the public, um, regardless of whether this, uh, in other words, this increase is happening irrespective of the senior bag program. I mean, this is the increase that it would be. The senior bag program is being covered by other funds, not by subsidies from people paying more for their bags. Is that accurate?
Uh, not completely. So the surplus could be used to offset any potential increase for at least one year.
Okay. All right. I'm just getting my head around it all, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
I think that providing seniors, the, you know, when we talk about things going up, you know, 32%, that sounds huge. Um, but when we talk dollars and cents, we're, you know, we're, we're talking $4, uh, more in the course, uh, $4 more. And I think the average working person can absorb that $4 cost a lot better than someone who's on a fixed income uh, with in, pay that's, you know, income that's going up by point one to 1% a year. So, you know, the opportunity to be able to offer seniors some relief, and I would anticipate that not all 2,200 households would participate in the program. Um, that, you know, many people I know in Lunenburg, given the average household income, uh, I think are, are doing pretty well, even in retirement. And so not everyone, I think, will take advantage, but a pilot for one year will give us some good data on usage and see what those numbers really are. So that way in the future, we can project out, you know, more accurately. So what are your concerns, if any, to the town manager about, uh, the senior discount?
I think I can work out the logistics with the senior center as far as, um, you know, providing the bags, um, in a tracked way to seniors, so we can keep track of making sure that only one, uh, roll goes to each eligible household. Um, my, uh, one of my main concerns when it first was broached was, um, we had gotten away from the, the town providing the bags and being the middle person and went to the retail distribution service model, uh, for that very purpose. This, this model that I'm proposing doesn't, um, propose any exchange of funds, which I think is a benefit, that would be an added burden on the department. Um, I think they're the most, um, already set up to have that, that program in place, put into the My Senior Center, um, program that when you enter the senior center, you log in too. So I think that could be useful in that, in that way.
All right. So we will delay voting on this until, uh, the next, next meeting. And I, just to remind everyone at home, the reason why we're looking at such a substantial increase is that we received one bid, uh, on this and that one bid was substantially higher, uh, than their previous cost. And, uh, as the town manager mentioned in previous meetings, some of this is driven by our relationship with China uh, and they're not taking our recyclables anymore and therefore costing trash removal costs across the country have gone, have gone up. All right. Well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
We have upcoming meeting on July the 6th, uh, July the 13th and July the 20th. Are there any public comments from the public tonight? Seeing none, uh, any public comments from the board? Okay, um, so tonight, we're going to go into an executive session. So, um, there's going to need to be a motion to enter into executive session and to adjourn after exec, after exiting executive session. Pursuant to Master in Rural Law, Chapter 30, Section 21, Paragraph 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a government's litigating position and the chair so declares, namely, Aldrick et al. v. Board of Selectmen of the Town of Lunenburg et al., Worcester Superior Court Docket Number, uh, as provided on the agenda, Lunenburg Board of Health versus Gonyer et al., uh, Central Housing Court Docket Number, uh, as provided on the agenda, Massey versus Town of Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals, and Worcester Superior Court Civil Action Number, uh, as noted on the agenda, Town of Lunenburg versus Aliva Central Housing Court Docket Number, uh, as noted on the agenda, and approval of executive session, meeting minutes related to these cases.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Marino.
Aye.
Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So we will take a five-minute recess while, uh, the public has opportunity to leave so that way we can enter executive session.